Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Meeting of Monday, September 11th. It's seven o'clock. We're here in council chambers. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Counselor O'Clair.
Delayed.
Counselor Carrasco. Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor DePietro. Counselor McKenzie.
Present.
Counselor Manah.
Present.
Counselor Morales.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Six present, three delayed or absent.
Thank you. Counselor McKenzie.
Yes, I believe that, Madam Chair, I believe that Esteban Carrasco is away on vacation for this week.
Okay. He just didn't notify anyone, so.
Ah, he.
Did he? Did you know for?
Yeah, I did, yes.
Just checking. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of August 28th, 2017.
Second.
Are there any corrections or amendments of any kind, additions, deletions? Can vote. All those in favor. That's five. Now, the next two items, consider and accept the council of the whole meeting minutes for the 28th and the 24th. I did review some of those myself, and we made a couple of amendments to them prior to this and sent them out to the members. I don't know if you want a few extra minutes to look them over again, if you feel comfortable. It was just to include a little more of the discussion that took place at the council of the whole meeting. Rather than amend them here, I just thought it would be best to clarify it prior. And I believe it's in red.
Yeah.
We printed everything.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I just ask if the correction was made where my title was changed from Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
As Counselor Nash pointed out, he was Chairman Nash. Okay, so, if we're comfortable then, Agenda item three is consider and accept the council of the whole meeting minutes of August 28th, 2017.
Second. I wish to abstain. I wasn't there.
Okay. One abstention there. All those in favor. There's four with one abstention. Agenda item three B, consider and accept the council of the whole meeting minutes of August 24th, 2017.
Second.
Again, any thoughts on those? Counselor McKenzie.
Yes, again, I was not there, so I wish to abstain.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? Four with one abstention. Am I counting too many? We are six people, I'm sorry.
Yes, we are.
I know, we were five and... Thank you for correcting me, I appreciate it. Okay, moving on to Agenda item number four, Subcommittee summaries, relevant minutes to be read at each Agenda item. 4A is General Government.
I've got the minutes, formal minutes, from the August 15th meeting, which I summarized at the last meeting, and that's already been dealt with. If anybody wants formal copies, they have them on file. The meetings that, we've got several items from the August 31st minutes, however, that are on tonight's agenda. I will get to them when we get to them, but just to point out that, let's see, they were specifically, the item on the solar ground lease, on the purchase and sale agreement for the, for Arch Realty, and that's the Wells project, that discussion. I don't think that's what's on our agenda. So I guess that's it. And we, the one that's not on our Agenda item for tonight is that we have a, we had an item number four was to continue discussion of landfill resolution and entertain a motion to recommend a council for ratification, which ended up turning into a discussion of a, of sending, of seeking legal opinions regarding a landfill bylaw, which is not complete yet, that's why it's not on the agenda yet. Other than that, other than that, I will hear the other stuff when it comes up.
Thank you, Counselor Steves. I do have a concern that I'm going to raise right now in regard to those minutes. There's a note on the backside, Counselor Steves supported the idea but expressed concern about making sure it didn't conflict with the existing contract for the year that remains. He noted it will also go to full council's agenda, but Mr. San Antonio said he'd send it to the attorney before then anyway, before then. There was a motion by Ms. Ryan to have the manager work with legal counsel to develop a bylaw that prohibits the development of a landfill on any land of the town of Southbridge without a public referendum. Counselor Nash seconded that, and it passed three to zero. I would like to clearly point out that this was in violation of our council, seeking legal counsel resolution that we have. This should have been a recommendation, and when you told me it would come to council, I had no problem putting the recommendation that the manager seek legal counsel, but for any legal counsel, it needs to be approved by a vote of this council. So that should have been a recommendation to have the manager seek legal opinion and not to give him direction to seek legal opinion. And therefore, that was in violation, and we have, I have the document with me after.
Did you get, did you get the email I sent after the meeting about putting it on the agenda?
I did, but being away, and I quickly scanned through, and I saw that you were doing it, and we talked about putting it on the agenda.
So it's not on the agenda.
But it's not on the agenda because we also discussed making sure it was more fully formed. But you clearly gave direction, and the manager, and I have the email from the lawyer, he did already seek legal opinion on this without any other counsel, without a vote from council allotting for that legal opinion in terms of cost. So I just want to be clear that we have a rule here about seeking legal opinions, and we're supposed to by vote of this council because we are in charge of the, of funding from the taxpayers' money, that we're supposed to make sure all of council wants to seek legal opinion, just as we did previously. So that should have been a recommendation to the manager, seek legal opinion, and it should have come up tonight for a vote, and then he could have easily, it's not that he wouldn't have been allowed to do that, it's just the process, and we need to be mindful of the process because it puts us at risk of violating our own, our own rules. So I just, I hadn't caught that until going through your minutes this morning, actually, so. All right, Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Also, I feel that this, the bylaw should not have been under the Agenda item in regards to the resolution, because this is a whole new item itself. It should have either went under New Business, or it should have went on another General Government. That was, that's, that's a huge deal, and the, all councilors should have been afforded input into that. And it certainly, for me, it didn't fall under Agenda item number four, the resolution. Resolution is what it is. The bylaw is a law. And I feel that that should have went under New Business, or it should have been on another agenda, totally separate, and all councilors should have been afforded the right to weigh in on that. Thank you.
Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This particular item, is this a bylaw that has been transgressed, or is this, and if not, where does this rule come from?
It was to, the committee is inter, citizens were interested in a, some type of a bylaw that would prohibit creating landfills and on town, or on any land in Southbridge. And so they were putting together the language and looking for a legal opinion as to whether that would be legal to do. My only, the only consideration I have is not what they're trying to do bylaw-wise, it is just the fact of seeking legal attorney counsel, that type of counsel, obviously, and that we have a provision, a multi-page provision, that the manager has copies of in the office, that clearly outlines that when it is directed by council members, when we are directing legal action that costs money, it's by vote of this council, all council, not just a subcommittee and a few members, but by up here at council. So I just want to make sure we're following the same rules, that's all.
But you haven't answered my question, huh?
Okay.
What I'm saying is, is this a bylaw?
It's not a, is what a bylaw, the?
The, that we have to vote through all nine councilors.
It's a, it's a resolution, and I have it in here. I thought I grabbed it when I left the house.
I think it's.
It's a policy. It's a policy that we voted on previously and is in force. It is to keep the, when, when Mr. Pecos was here, we had discussed the need for, or not need for, councilors going, seeking legal opinion and costing us a lot of money. A lot of times, councilors were calling the, the lawyers directly on questions, and so we felt as a council that to keep legal fees in check, that we should know when council, unless it was matters of ethics for themselves or other types of personal matters, if it was anything to do with the community of the town, then it should come by the body.
Madam Chair, that we have this policy clarified in writing to all councilors?
And I believe it was sent to us.
I've got a copy somewhere.
Are all aware of it?
I know it's in my bag, I just.
Any, any, any other policies that are violated, that we just, you know, tried to handle it before we come to a meeting, so that we, number one, don't embarrass anyone, and number two, so that we.
Not embarrass its policy.
So that we, excuse me, so that we also are aware of any policies, let's have them documented and maybe even like a little booklet or something, so we all have, I wasn't here three years ago, so I would not be privy to that policy, as I'm sure, Ms., there was a number of councilors who are also in that same bag. So Papa needs a brand-new bag.
With all due respect, Counselor McKenzie, we talked about this just a few weeks ago when we were seeking legal opinion, and they didn't want the chair to do it, and we discussed this policy, and that's why it's come up, and I have a copy from the office. It was just here.
I respect what you're saying, and I appreciate.
But we'll get you a copy, Ms. Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, yeah.
And we'll get everybody a copy.
That's a good idea.
This policy was in effect May 19th, 2013. It's Policy on Use of Town Council, Standard Operating Procedure Number 12, Town of Southbridge, Policy on Use of Town Council. And it has all the directives, and the one that I refer to is Section 3, Town Council Access to the Town Attorney's Special Councils. When so authorized by the council, the chairman of the council, the town manager, or any member of the council, when specifically delegated by the council, will contact the town attorney or special counsel and request service consistent with council's vote.
I appreciate that. I would also ask that we send it to the town manager as well, so that he has it.
He has it. In the office, it's there. Okay. Did I miss a hint? Sorry. Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. It was always my understanding that that specific provision was to, you know, I guess, manage different people on the council, perhaps going to, to the town attorney for different items, not necessarily talking about something in subcommittee and at the town council level multiple, multiple times, and asking for a legal opinion on something that's, you know, been brought before, all nine of us on several occasions. Not so much, like, I don't, I don't understand why the town manager would need council approval to, to go and do this. I don't think that that was the spirit of that provision, if I remember correctly, although it wasn't on the council at the time.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. With all due respect, citizen, citizen members of the subcommittees don't have any binding authority to direct the manager to do anything. We, as a council of nine, who are voted by the community to serve up here and oversee our town manager, have that authority. And if we just let every council go and say, "I want a legal opinion on this, I want a legal opinion on this," and before you know it, our legal costs are going to be higher than what they already are now. And I'll state this again, this should not even have been on this agenda, under Agenda item number four, because you were talking about a resolution, and the bylaw is clearly a new topic. It should have been under New Business, or it should have been on another agenda, and all councilors should have been afforded the right to have the discussion, not just a select few. Thank you.
Hey, Counselor Manah, Counselor Nash. I apologize.
No worries. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I respect what's been said here. I just want to point out, for Counselor Manah's benefit, it was stated during that meeting, and I know for a fact it was stated because I said it, and it, it did have some confusion in my mind, but I did mention that discussing a bylaw should have been an Agenda item on a future General Government meeting. It was stated. I don't see it reflected in the minutes. However, I also didn't think that the interpretation I made from these minutes was that we're going to have a bylaw to vote on at council without it first coming to General Government. So if there's any liability.
It's not done yet.
Counselor Steves and I will take it for any advice that we gave the town manager to seek a legal opinion. So please excuse me, I will, I'll suffer the consequences and own up to it, but I had no problem with the town manager seeking a legal opinion on something like that, that we have been discussing. So I'll apologize to the council as necessary, but I think it's time to move on. We don't need to beat a dead horse. Thank you.
And I would like to point out, it isn't done yet, so. It will definitely come back to General Government for, for full vetting.
It is not about the topic. It is just clear, policy-wise, that, I just want to be very clear, there is a purpose. I won't read it, I'll let you guys get your copies, and you'll understand. It's about process and procedure here for all of us in any topic. Any other committee could say, "Go look for this, go look for," you know, "go and ask the lawyers." Every time we make a phone call, two minutes, five minutes, it's hundreds of dollars. So it was just a matter of the timing and the process. That's all I'm bringing up moving forward. Everybody else set with that? Great. Thank you. Moving on, Subcommittee 4B, Department of Public Works. That would be Counselor DePietro.
Madam Chair, we have not had a meeting since our last council. We do have one scheduled for Wednesday, and I would ask a question. My first subcommittee that I chaired, I get a phone call requesting a date, making sure that it worked for myself and everyone else that was on the subcommittee, and I.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
I saw the, excuse me, the upcoming.
Meeting.
DPW meeting for Wednesday.
On Wednesday at 7:00 PM that I asked you about because it was asked by the office. I sent you, we sent a text message a couple weeks ago with that time and date.
Oh, which, which was fine, but I had no opportunity to find out if that was acceptable for everyone else on the committee.
Okay, but that was, okay.
Which I would have liked to make some phone calls, I mean, I'm, that's, it works great for me, but.
Okay, but when you were approached, like I said, almost two weeks ago, with this, asked whether or not you would have this meeting, you said that worked for you, so that was.
Oh, absolutely.
But then it was up to you, Mr. Chair of the DPW, to then contact your people and make sure, or, just saying, that's, that's how that procedure works. I know you're new as the chairman of the DPW.
So that was written in stone the day we had the conversation?
No, you, you could have contacted the office and, and took the lead on that. It was just a matter of what worked.
No, it was perfect for me. I'm, out of courtesy to, to the other folks on the committee, councilors.
It's your call, sir. It's your call.
All right.
Okay.
I didn't know it was written in stone until I saw it, and I just felt bad, and ever, I, I, well, now I know, I will call.
Okay.
Everyone else that's involved in the committee, absolutely.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you so much.
So your meeting is Wednesday at 7:00 PM, yes?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Very good. Moving on, 4C, Education and Human Services. That is Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I'll skip reading the minutes from the meeting that we held on Wednesday, September 6th, because the three items are all on tonight's agenda for citizen appointments to EHS and one appointment to the Southbridge Cultural Council. Thank you.
Thank you. 4D, Planning and Development. That'd be Counselor O'Clair.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Would you like me to read the minutes, or are we doing them as they go on the?
Generally, you just give a summary of the topics, and if they're on tonight, then at that time, you could read the sections that are applicable, however you want to handle it.
I actually, um. It appears that the copy that I sent, Yvonne, was cut off, but most of, most of it's on there. So we did have a meeting on the 5th at 6:30. The meeting was called toward at 6:30, 4:00 PM. There was a quorum of town council present. The first Agenda item was the recommendation of Andrew Gulickson as a citizen member to the Planning and Development Subcommittee for a one-year term. That was ultimately passed unanimously, three to nothing. The second Agenda item was to review the town manager's recommendation to appoint Warren Goddard of Southbridge to the Economic and Development Committee for a two-year term effective. That ultimately passed unanimously, three to zero. Agenda item number four was to discuss the fiscal year 2017 mini entitlement program grant awarded to the town of Southbridge, which is on the agenda for this evening, if I recall correctly. So we can speak about that at the time. And then the other Agenda item was about a zoning, was about rezoning 495 Main Street, which we can talk about at that time as well. And the meeting was adjourned at, I believe it was about 8:30. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And 4E, Protections of Persons and Property. Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have a meeting on August 29th. I am not going to read the minutes, and, as it'll take too long, and these are a matter of public record. If you'd like to read the minutes, you can contact our clerk's office. The, all we discussed was a citizen's appointment for PPP, add-in two auxiliaries to our police department, and we talked about a dispatcher which is desperately needed, and the police chief is here to talk on that when he, if anybody has any questions on that. I do not have any meeting minutes, any meetings planned at this time. I do have a correction that I will be making. Thank you, Counselor Nash, for, for bringing that to my attention, and I will submit that correction to Yvonne tomorrow. Thank you.
Agenda item number five is Chairman's Announcements. So, as you all know, today is September 11th, and it was 16 years ago that acts of terrorism took place with such magnitude that their effects were not only felt in New York, but across our country and across, and more and throughout the world. I ask that we all here, and those of you at home, join us in a moment of silence to remember those lives lost, but I also ask for you to pray for those who still struggle every day from that horrific event. And also, finally, for the men and the women who work day in and day out, serving with, for public safety on all levels, that they may be kept out of harm's way. So if we can take a moment. Thank you. And it would seem appropriate at this time to bring to your attention the needs, need to support one of our own local officers. Sadly, Officer Reddick is suffering, suffering from cancer. He's battling cancer, but his friends and his colleagues, with some great spirit, are rallying to help him out and his family by holding a fundraiser. You might have seen some flyers out. It is the Ride for Rock Motorcycle Run and Barbecue, and it is for Officer Reddick. On Saturday, September 30th, the riders will leave from the Southbridge Police Department on Mechanic Street. Registration is 9 to 11. Kickstands are up at 11:00 AM, and the ride will end with a barbecue at the Italian Club on North Street in Southbridge, where there will be raffles, food, live music, and more, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. For riders, it's $35. For passengers, it's 20. If you just come for dinner and festivities after, it's 20. For more information and to get tickets, you can go to rideforrock19855@gmail.com. Rideforrock19855@gmail.com. You can also go to facebook.com/rideforrock, and you can also look at Instagram at rideforrock1985. You, a little note on there, said you get a t-shirt and dinner for your participation. And we hope that we'll get a huge turnout and really show our support for all that Officer Reddick has done for this community. So today, I attended Substance Abuse Committee's special presentation at the Middle High School. It was by former NBA basketball star Chris Heron, and I know there were many other people. I was towards the back, and a lot of you up front sitting. It was, to say it was inspirational would, would not be enough. It was his own dealings with substance abuse, his rise to fame, and his ultimate decline, and what he is doing now in his life, and how he hopes to change many other youths and others that are affected by the crisis that's out there. Very powerful motivating presentation, and I just want to really thank all that had anything to do with bringing the speaker to, to the students and, and us, because it was motivational, I think, to everybody. And kudos to him and his work that he continues to do as, as, to keep himself on the straight and narrow going forward for his family. So again, it was a wonderful presentation, it was a couple of hours of time in the Middle High School, and fantastic. I'm sure everybody feels the same way. This past Saturday, I was able to spend a couple of hours at the Henry Street Field and watch the first-ever doubles handball tournament. I really want to thank William and Nancy Ortiz, who have worked diligently with the Rec Committee to make this happen in Southbridge. We have our own first little handball court, I guess you would call it. It's a paved area that's all lined, and has a backboard, and handball is very popular, apparently, but we didn't really know much about it, and there was no real place to play outside here in Southbridge. But because, again, due to the efforts of many, and especially Ortiz's, who are big fans of, of handball, all you need is a very inexpensive ball and a back wall, and you can have a great, great time and get a lot of exercise. So it was wonderful. I had to say, there had to be at least maybe 30 people there at any given time, families, young people watching, a lot of guys, just really having a great time. Counselor Morales was there with me, and we just really enjoyed seeing something new here in Southbridge, and with any luck, there'll be more. People who are from all over, by the way. We had people from out of state, out of town, neighboring towns. It was, it was quite interesting, and, and kudos to them. I'm hoping to bring them in at some point where they can do maybe a little presentation, explain what handball is and how you can become involved here locally at a future date. And let's see, recording clerks. I want to just make a public announcement. We need more recording clerks, per diem type people. People who are willing to maybe do a little part-time work, if they have an evening or so. Sometimes we are just without recording clerks. If you've never done it, it's something you could learn. If you, it's actually a kind of a nice little part-time stipend situation that you can get from this. The hourly rate and all, I think, is, is actually very, very good for somebody who's interested in spending a few hours here and a few hours getting it done. I'm making a public announcement. I know that we post it, I hear that all the time, but seriously, if you're out there, you're listening, and you would like a once-in-a-while part-time position and make some, some decent money, the holidays are coming, we would love to hear from you and see if maybe we can partner up and, and help you economically and, and help us, because we do need to keep minutes. It's, and again, not difficult, and I think just about, hey, we do it at our subcommittee meetings, I think anybody can do it. So certainly, come and give us a call, give the town manager's office a call. And I would now ask, is there's anything I missed? If you, any council would like to say something at this point, to let people know what's going on, or something that you did, I'd be more than happy to open that up to you. Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Just a supplement about the presentation by Chris Heron today. I want to also extend our gratitude to Dr. Townsall, Dr. Johnston, and all the administration and staff that were able to help facilitate that presentation. It was absolutely astounding, and I'll echo your sentiment that it was very impressive. And on top of it, I didn't hear you, and I don't know if the town manager is going to bring this up, but our thanks to Spectrum Health Systems for their sponsorship of that event. Thank you.
This is why we all need to bring it together. Thank you very much for that. Anybody else? All right, seeing them moving on, we'll go to Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Town Manager.
Well, there you go. There's half of what I was going to say, so that's good.
Sorry.
A couple, that's fine. A couple of quick announcements. First of all, our new town planner is effectively working, and I know that a number of you have reached out to him, are ready to, to discuss issues. I know Gus and, and Rick and Wally have already been on to talk to him. I encourage you to go meet him, he's a great guy, a real asset to our team. He's already attended the conservation meeting, and I've heard nothing but good things about him already, so I think it's going to be a tremendous asset to the town going forward. I have to talk about the Heron event as well. This event came as a result of the Town Manager's Task Force on Substance Abuse, and I'm really proud of the entire team that serves on that committee for orchestrating this event. You're absolutely right. Mark Oris, the, I don't know, Director of, of Spectrum Health Services, actually funded and paid for this entire event. He's, he truly is an asset to this community. I think Counselor Clements said it great. This was not only inspirational, it was just a fantastic, had fantastic impact on the children of our community, and frankly, on us, which was somewhat surprising, I think. We are going to continue that, though. Our efforts have not stopped because we've had one great speaker. We are going to continue. Coming up very shortly is Red Ribbon Week. On October 23rd to 31st, we're going to be, once again, trying to educate the public about the issues of substance abuse and how dangerous it is. And truthfully, this is not an issue of just children, it's an issue of parents and people of all ages who are involved in this problem. The sad thing is, people are dying across our country, and we need to do as much as we can about it. And we've put together a great team of. we can about it. And we've put together a great team of the hospital, Harrington Hospital, and Spectrum, and Family Services, and our Head Start program, our police, our fire, public health. We've got a great team, but it's a huge problem. And I appreciate, we've seen council members at recent meetings, but I tell you, when you went to today's meeting, you realize that people can make a difference. And what we've done so far is reaching out and making a difference to people, and we want to continue that. But we need your help. Anyone who's watching this meeting, you need to get involved in Red Ribbon Week. Wear red ribbons, create activities. There's a website, and this year's, I guess, motto or slogan is, "Your future is key, so stay drug-free." But you can participate as a business owner in town. You can have all your employees wear red ribbons. You can put up signs. You can put up posters. There's pledges. I would ask you to go to the Red Ribbon website on the event. It's redribbon.org. Please look it up. There's a planning guide. Your organization, your business, whatever group you have, can utilize activities from that book. They'll help you to really bring this issue out to more and more people, and that's really what we're going to do. I know the town hall last year actively engaged, and we are going to engage again. So if you see red ribbons around trees around town, you'll know what it means. It's our way of telling everyone in town that we care about them, that this is a major problem, and we want you to do everything in your power to stay away from illegal drugs. It's completely out of control across our country, and we need to do more. Madam Chairman, also, just briefly on the racquetball situation, I thought that was interesting. Originally, the Ortiz's wanted to do it at the senior center, and we had a lot of discussion about that. We thought Henry Street Park would be a great place for it. Particularly, as you say, it's a very exciting sport that a lot of people are engaged in, but particularly, our Latino community is very involved in this sport. And I'm sure that you saw a lot of young Latino, both men and women are involved in this sport. So, yeah, what's that?
There were old ones.
Old ones, too. But that is a great sport, and we wanted to put up the one wall to kind of test it and see how it goes, and we're looking forward to maybe doing some more walls as well. The great thing about that, Madam Chairman, is it was a combination of funds we had put aside from free cash last year to build a wall, but it was also built, you know, we essentially built the wood, or got the wood and everything. They actually built it. So it was a combined effort between a private organization and a town, which was a benefit to everybody. So that's what happens when everybody works together to do something. The positive event can happen like the tournament. So, thank you for attending. I think it was great that you guys were there, and we're going to continue to try to build that into the future. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
All set?
Madam Chair, can I throw one more event out?
Certainly.
We won't have another meeting, but I know there's an Oktoberfest coming up. Could we just mention that? I don't have any details.
Please do.
I don't have the details. I think it's the 23rd.
September 28th, am I right?
23rd?
23rd, I forget. Is it 23rd? Yeah, it's going to be at our Commons. It's going to be a great event. It's being sponsored by the Southbridge Business Partnership and the Arts Center, along with our Recreation Department. It's going to have a lot of activities for children, as well as, of course, an Oktoberfest, there has to be beer. It's a requirement. But I think it'll be something for all ages, and I encourage everybody to come. I know it's all over Facebook, the information about the event, but would love to have you be involved in our community and attend this event.
Thank you. I'm pretty sure it's Sunday, the 24th.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, there are flyers everywhere, as you said, so it's out there. Anything else? Anything else, Mr.?
Nope.
Okay, very good. Moving on, we have swearing-in presentations, number seven, and there are none this evening, so we will move on to citizens' forum. Is there anyone who would like to speak to anything not on the agenda this evening? We ask that you step forward. You state your name and address, and you will be allotted five minutes.
Good evening. Joe Catrona, former Town Council, resident of Southbridge. I'd like to ask, if I could, several questions, going back to the 24th of July, when we had made, several statements were made at that time by the Town Manager. Just wanted, so we can figure out where we're at as a town. The Town Manager made several statements that he's not happy here anymore. He's not comfortable. He wanted to make it clear that he doesn't want to open negotiations. I asked the Town Manager directly if he's seeking employment currently, anywhere right now.
Do you want to ask me that now, or?
Yes.
I am looking at other opportunities. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Another question about the Southbridge Riverside Park. I've never seen that come before council. I understand that the land might have passed for a dollar, but I've never seen it come before council. I question why.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
It has come before councils. As a matter of fact, Town Council voted last year in its capital improvement budget to send $100,000 of town money aside for that specific purpose. It was explained to them what that purpose was, that I would be discussing the issue to try to acquire the land from Franklin Development Company, either in the form of a lease or a purchase, and we would be looking for a grant. The assurance I made to Town Council at that time was that I would not move forward with spending any of the $100,000 we set aside unless we did receive a state grant to be able to do that project. So, it's also been made aware in the master plan, which was presented to Town Council, and actually presented to the citizens at large through our presentation here in this room. It's been on the master plan. It's been discussed in the PND Subcommittee with all the members of the PND Subcommittee. It's been in my Town Manager reports. It has been quite explicitly explained and discussed in many instances.
Okay, thank you. The actual land purchase for the $1 that was discussed?
Yeah.
It's not been discussed.
Through you?
No.
It has not been discussed, Mr. Catrona. Nor has, just so, to be clear, the presentation, the actual grant application was sent in, and we received an email copy of that, which did have some concerns to a number of councilors, that that was never discussed before that grant with its encumbrances were given to us. Just for, that's...
Through you, Madam Chair.
Clarification, thank you.
I don't want to be in a debate with the Chair over this. The grant, I explained very clearly when the $100,000 was put aside, that I would be applying for the grant. The Town Manager's Office, under the power vested in the Town Manager through the Town Charter, gives me the right to apply for grants. It specifically says that any grant received has to be accepted and voted on by the Town Council, but we apply for grants on a routine basis that do not come before Town Council.
Thank you.
Mr. Catrona, I think we have another counselor speaking. Counselor Clear, did you want to say something?
Go ahead.
Just really quick, through you, Madam Chair. The land purchase was discussed up at the council level with at least two of the master plan updates that I can remember. It wasn't ever voted on by council, but it has been discussed in open meetings several times.
There are a number of concerns, Mr. Catrona, that I'm sure we'll be coming to subcommittee with at some point. I appreciate you questioning that, though.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to speak to council? We have five minutes. Any other citizens? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Agenda item number nine, vote to confirm the appointment of Zachary Berquist of Putnam, Connecticut, as auxiliary police officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Thank you, Chief. Would you like to?
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council, Mr. Town Manager. Just if I can, Zach Berquist is here tonight as a candidate for auxiliary, like I explained. It's PPP in previous meetings here. He completed approximately 315 hours of training at the Reserve Academy. That's two days a week, four hours each night, and all day on a Saturday for several months. Several thousand dollars in tuition, equipment, that's just part of the training. Then we go through the interview and background process. He's a full-year vet of the Army. He served in Afghanistan. He's attending Quinn Sig at this time, seeking an associate to the degree of criminal justice, and I highly recommend him for appointment to auxiliary.
Any questions or comments for the Chief? Seeing none? All those in favor? Unanimous by eight. The numbers. Okay. Agenda item number 10, vote to confirm the appointment of Brendan Murphy of Southbridge as auxiliary police officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Chief?
If I could again, through you, Madam Chair. Mr. Murphy, same qualifications, completed the same training, two days during the week, one day on the weekend. He's come up to about 315 hours, sacrificed time and money to complete this training. He's also a full-year vet. Mr. Murphy was in the Marine Corps. He is currently a work security at Heritage Hospital, familiar with our community. He's worked security for another agency. He's worked with autistic children. I think he's highly qualified, and I highly recommend him for the position of auxiliary.
Any questions for the Chief? Counselor DePietre, and then Counselor McKenzie.
If I may, through you, Madam Chair. Chief, this council has appointed well over a dozen fine women and gentlemen for auxiliary. And it just begs the question, and nothing to do with the appointment of these fine gentlemen, but why are there, with all these folks in auxiliary, the Western County sheriffs, which I've seen on different details in the last several weeks, with all these folks we have, what are they doing in town? Why aren't these guys making the money?
Sure. If I can answer that, through you, Madam Chair. The issue, and the reason why we've had so many come forward, is I like to put auxiliaries on probably twice a year, and we do it in clusters. This round, we had 11 total, including these two gentlemen. We had 10 or 11 leave to go to other police departments, other agencies, and these, all these guys, these men and women that have been put on, need to be trained still. They can't just come on as an auxiliary, the new people that have come in the door, and I just put them on traffic duty. It's a few months of learning the system, riding with a senior officer, and that type of thing. So you may, in the spring season, when details pick up again, see all of our auxiliaries in full-time offices. But right now, we're limited. We only have 12 auxiliaries that are working and trained. So our pool has really dwindled with people leaving so quickly, and now we're trying to get it back up. I like to keep it between 25 and 30 auxiliaries. So if we have 25 and 30 auxiliaries fully trained, you wouldn't see so many out-of-town offices. But they need to be trained.
Which again, begs the question, if I may, Madam Chair. So, we have 12 auxiliary, ready to rock and roll to do road detail, plus whichever full-time officers want to take advantage of it.
But if I could, you have to understand, our auxiliaries also have full-time jobs. Most of them work days, Monday to Friday, and they come and ride with us at night and volunteer their time on weekends. 99% of our traffic duty in the community is Monday through Friday days. So a lot of the men and women that are auxiliaries can't take those details.
Well, I appreciate it, Chair. I was just amazed to see it. I really was. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, just to clarify, whenever possible, we use our auxiliary and our own police first, before we move on to the...
Absolutely. It's a benefit to the community to have local people who know the streets and the byways and the way that we operate. Absolutely. But if we can't fill it, we have to go outside. And that's not unique to our community. That's happening. I don't know if it's a generational thing, or I don't know why, but it's hard to find people that want to work. I mean, it's that simple.
Thank you, Chief. All set, Counselor?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else? Anybody else over here? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous? That's eight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 11, vote to confirm the appointment of John Denny of Southbridge as citizen member to the Protection of Persons and... Sorry, we should have... Come here a minute. Sorry, sorry, I thought there was... Yeah, sorry about that. For some reason, I was thinking the next one was another.
Well, you jumped ahead quickly, so I think I'd get him out of here.
Hey, move him along. Don't want to keep you guys any longer than we need to. Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
All right. Thank you for your time tonight. Now, we will move on. Vote to confirm the appointment of John Denny of Southbridge as citizen member to the Protection of Persons and Properties Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2018, or until a new member is appointed.
Second.
Any comments on this? Chairman Manah, do you want to say anything about PPP?
Well, like I said, the minutes will be filed with the clerk, but he is a citizen of Southbridge who wants to give to the community. All positions that are in Subcommittee, of course, are all volunteers. So, you know, I find, I just, you know, people that want to volunteer for our community and just try to do what's right is basically the only qualification, I think, that is needed. So, I do know Mr. Denny, too, and he's a very nice person, and he is genuinely concerned about the community and genuinely wants to give back.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McKenzie, did you have something?
I'm confused here. I have one named John Denny, and I have another named John Daniel. Is that two different?
He's a Jesus.
Okay, so we're gonna, I have nothing to say right now, except put my finger in my mouth and shut up.
Is there anyone else who would like to discuss this one? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous by eight. Thank you. Number 12, vote to confirm the appointment of Andrew Gullickson as citizen member to the Planning and Development Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2018, or until a new member is appointed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I'm going to let Counselor Clear, because it's her minutes. Meeting first? Meeting minutes or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. So, Mr. Gullickson was on the Planning and Development Subcommittee last year. You know, I really admire his passion and his excitement for local town politics. It was, you know, his first time really getting his feet wet, and he jumped in. You know, he had some really thoughtful contributions, and I'd like to see him again on the Planning and Development Subcommittee to continue the good work that he did last year.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor McKenzie?
Ms. Madam Chair, I'm also very familiar with Andrew Gullickson, and I find him to be not only an extremely pleasant person, but he's such a young man, and we need young people, such as our new counselor, and we need a feed of young people to be interested in town management, town government. And I'm very blessed by this man, and I support him wholeheartedly.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Eight unanimous. Moving on to agenda item number 13, vote to confirm the appointment of Martina Shea as citizen member to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2018, or until a new member is appointed.
So moved.
Discussion on Ms. Shea. I just know she's served... Oh, go ahead.
I'd be happy to do a quick introduction, although Ms. Shea really doesn't need one. As a retired educator from the town of Southbridge School System, I won't bother reading the minutes, but I will just make a statement that, obviously, we're pleased to see Ms. Shea's interested in joining EHS again this year. She participated last year and has dedicated many years to this community. One thing that really hit home with me was a statement that Ms. Shea made during our Subcommittee meeting, where she indicated that it's been an honor to serve the community in all capacities, and I'm very pleased to make this recommendation. And I'm sure that I have your support, as does Ms. Shea. So, thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor? It's eight unanimous. Thank you. 14, vote to confirm the appointment of John Daniel as citizen member to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2018, or until a new member is appointed.
So moved. Second.
Would you like to comment on that, Chairman?
I'd be quite pleased. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I'll note that Mr. Daniel's in the audience, if you wouldn't mind raising his hand, just so the councilors could recognize you. Thank you for coming forward as a candidate for appointment to EHS Subcommittee. Mr. Daniel brings years of experience in education. He's semi-retired. He was vice principal at Bartlett High School in Webster. I won't say that too loudly. He also served for several years in the capacity of EMT, so I look at him as a very well-rounded candidate to serve the community on EHS. And obviously, I'm sure that the Town Manager and others who have had the chance to meet Mr. Daniel will support his candidacy to be appointed to EHS. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to add that one of the things that really jumped out at me, besides his educational background, is his health background. And I think that'll be, he's both a health educator, and as Counselor Nash mentioned, an EMT. And I think that with the Health Department that we deal with all the issues that are going, I think that'll be really beneficial. So...
Very good. Thank you. All those in favor? That's eight unanimous present. Agenda item number 15, vote to confirm the Manager's recommendation to appoint Virginia Rappo to the Southbridge Cultural Council for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Would you like to mention something, Ms. Rappo?
Just that Virginia's been a regular member of the council for quite some time. As most of you know, you have to take a year off after you've served for so long. She did take her year off. She's came back. She loves being... She loves being involved in this particular council. I think she's a great asset to our community. It's nice to see someone that has a long-term commitment to the town, and she's one of those people. So I think she'd be a good member, continuing good member of the committee.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Eight unanimous. Agenda item number 16. Vote to confirm the manager's recommendation to appoint Warren Goddard of Southbridge to the Economic Development Commission for a two-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2019.
So moved.
Wait, wait. Two-year term. Yeah, 2019. Sorry, my brain was thinking 2020. To fill a vacancy due to member resignation.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any questions, town manager?
Just Madam Chairwoman, this gentleman has quite a diverse manufacturing background. He's a manufacturing engineer. His own company, Medical Engineer, has a lot of cybersecurity and technology background as well, so I think he's going to be a good asset. I know that our Economic Development Director was very pleased that he was joining the team, and of course, we're trying to build up a strong team of people with manufacturing and retail and business experience to continue trying to improve the economic climate in Southbridge.
Anything else? All those in favor? That's eight unanimous. Agenda item number 17. Vote to authorize the police chief to hire a full-time dispatcher.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Counselor DePietro.
Madam Chair, I'm 110% in favor of this decision. I believe, just for the record, we should give an estimated cost.
Why don't we have the chief give us an update on this? We have information in our packet, but certainly, and we discussed this at PPP, so.
Absolutely. Through you, Madam Chair. Hello again. At the PPP, I explained that I'll explain a little bit further tonight. At the time of the meeting, I had said a police officer in my department was sick. It wasn't a public issue. It was, I just learned about it a couple of days before. Now, we all know that it's Officer Reddick. With him being out for an indefinite period of time battling cancer, essentially covering his shifts with overtime. With the addition of this dispatcher, and I'll get into the cost in one second with that, what I will do, what enabled me to do, well, I can take a police officer that's currently assigned to the desk, put them on Officer Reddick's run on the 3 to 11 shift, and this full-time dispatcher will be covering the desk rather than my police officer inside. So rather than paying overtime every day from now until, I'm not sure when, hiring a fourth dispatcher, again, will allow me to put that police officer on the street, cover this hole. The cost of that dispatcher is about $36,000 from now until June 30, the end of the fiscal year. I believe, as it stands here today, as I mentioned at the PPP meeting, I can cover that within my existing budget, but I cannot predict the future. I don't want to stand here and pretend that I can. If there's a major incident in the community, God forbid if one of my other, another police officer gets sick and goes out long-term, with all the weather-related issues right now down south, if we get some kind of catastrophic storm that comes up the East Coast, anything like that can offset my budget. So I want to be clear tonight. As we sit here tonight, I'm comfortable and confident in telling you that we can cover this $36,000 cost. If there's some other issue between now and June 30, that may change, and I may be coming back to the town manager, and I'd have a good reason for going off a budget. I can tell you that.
Counselor Steves.
I just want to clarify, because you did bring this up at, I asked this specifically at PPP. Just to clarify, that's the cost without benefits. What is it with benefits?
Correct. The benefits on a $50,000 a year salaried employee is about $20,000 in benefits. So that's eventually what this employee would be as of July 1, because I wouldn't be looking to reduce my staffing. I'd still want to stay at 36 full-time police officers and four dispatches, at least. So we'd be, and I'd be making that argument with the town manager when we go over our budget in, you know, a few months from now, for the FY 19 year.
And for discussion, the, we've been discussing central dispatch and all that with the, you know, having three dispatchers at some point in order to handle everything that we do. I mean, this is a sort of a prelude to the potential to add more dispatchers because of the call volume that we have.
Correct. At some point, when I-- Correct. At some point, I'm going to be coming to the council along with the fire chief, and we're going to be requesting, you know, six or seven more full-time dispatches. This would essentially reduce it to five or six. So it's more, it's a preemptive strike on what's to come in the future, anyway, is what I'm considering this.
And the community will be hearing more about the budget impact and the revenue, additional revenue impact for doing such a change that we're looking at right now. So attend meetings. We'll see that on agendas, on PPP. You should be fully informed, and at some point, we'll have a full presentation publicly so that people will have all the information, what we're trying to do to keep the community safe and protected.
Yeah, just one quick question, Chief. Do you have a rough timeframe of when you and Chief DeFranzo might have that report set up?
Sure. We've been working on that now for several months, I'll even say more than a year. I've got the numbers essentially done, so that could be done within the next few months, I would say. As far as a full report to the town manager, yes, within a few months.
So we would be able to get it done, say, by like the end of, like the end of the year, so we can actually work into the next budget cycle?
Yes, that's what our plan is. Yes, absolutely.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Unanimous, eight. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Look forward to hearing how you do with that hire.
Thanks.
At this point, yeah. 18. Vote to ratify extending the 2015 purchase and sales agreement between the town of Southbridge and Arch Street Development LLC for October 31, from October 31, 2017, to October 31, 2018.
Second.
Counselor Steves.
That was one of the agenda items on the last GenGov meeting, so let me read them. Mr. Sanangelo said this is a more of the same situation, where Arch Street is waiting for state approval for the last needed housing tax credits, which Rich Relich, is it Relich? Relich? Relich, okay. Expect to get this fall. If so, he plans to start construction work next spring, but he wants another year on the purchase and sale agreement, just in case. Ron said that he toured the old school with Mr. Relich recently to see some vandalism damage, which was relatively minor, a couple of windows and other items inside that were being discarded, anyway. Counselor Claire raised concerns that she has reservations about this project from the beginning, since it could have been used for other things. She expressed concern specifically about Arch Street's solvency, noting it hasn't filed an annual report with the Secretary of State since 2015. She added that the PNS called for a $100,000 deposit, but Arch Street only paid five. And I wanted to say, I followed up on, I took a look at the State's, the Secretary of State's website, and it does seem like Arch Street does, they seem to skip a couple of years every once in a while, and then they file them like in a badge. I don't know necessarily what that means. Anyway, Ron said that he would speak to Mr. Relich about the fiscal question and those things that we were just talking about, and noted Arch Street is partnering with Wind Development, which is a very big national firm for this project. Arch Street has invested hundreds of thousands in architectural design and other costs so far, and has already hired a construction company to do the work. It's already gone through planning. It would be ideal if this went through, so we don't have to worry about it anymore, Counselor Claire responded. Mr. Sanangelo said that this will have minimal impact on town services because the residents won't have kids. It's designed to be 55-plus, or is it, is it district 50-plus? Thank you. Where was I? He also noted that the state usually wants host houses to kick something in to match their tax credits, but that's a discussion for the future. This agreement just extends the deadline to 2018. And I know, last time I talked to the town manager, he tried to reach out to Mr. Relich, but unfortunately, we had to leave a message for him. So did you get anything more on that?
No.
Is there anything you can expand on some of the, I see you haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Relich about some of these financial concerns?
Through you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank Counselor Claire for the questions that she had at the meeting. I forwarded those questions to Rich, and Rich answered her, I think, quite appropriately, and she was pretty satisfied with the answers in terms of how he works as a corporation and the changing of the names of businesses for a variety of projects, is what goes on here. So you're correct. The only reason for the year to be clear, they're expecting the last program to be done this fall in terms of the housing credits, but it's not up to him. It's up to the state, so he's sort of at their will. That's why he wanted to have the extension, so he wouldn't have to keep coming back, depending upon what the state does. They're eager to start. I mean, they're truly eager to start. We did look at the project, as you said. We went inside and looked at all the facility, everything that was damaged is things he's going to replace, anyway. So there was no concerns about that as well. I have not got any answer, as I said, to Counselor Steves and to the people in the Subcommittee meeting. I've handled it. He said to me, well, the state usually likes the towns to participate in some way. So I did ask and call up and leave the message for him, but he's not returned that response yet. But it was not something he was overly concerned about, and didn't seem to be any major issue. Sometimes the town can do it through in-kind services and stuff of some type. So we'll look at that if it comes to be an issue, and I'll, of course, let you guys know if he comes with any comments about that. But at this point, I'm not overly concerned about it.
Counselor Claire?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Just to clarify, my questions went above and beyond just the Secretary of State filings. The Arch Street Development hadn't been very active in the past two years as well. There's no ongoing projects. Their last one was in 2015. And, you know, doing research on the two partners for this company, just because, you know, it's been taking so long, and I've been concerned about that. But that other, the other partner seemed to have been moved on to a different company through his LinkedIn and things of that nature. But the answers that I got to the questions, it looks like the gentleman that we're still working with from Arch Street Development has teamed up with Wind Development, which is a much larger firm, much more active, you know, in good standing and everything of that nature. So it seems like it's a very solvent project, and it very much eased my fears, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Unanimous by eight. Agenda item number 19. Motion that the town council vote to authorize the town manager to enter an amendment to the solar ground lease entered by the town of Southbridge and MeLink Corporation dated November 30, 2016. Said amendment is titled, quote, "First Amendment to Solar Ground Lease," end quote, and in general form as presented to town council on September 11, 2017.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Counselor Steves.
Thank you. That was also one of the items on our last agenda, and specifically, we talked a little bit about the fact that MeLink is leasing five town parcels to build solar arrays. Those came up to the council quite a while ago. It's gone through planning and all that stuff, which they'll eventually sell to an investor. They're going through the state's solar incentive program now, looking for funding, but they didn't make the deadline for the cut for the, what's called the SREC 2 program, which is the, and so they're waiting for the state to finalize what's the new version is, which is called SMART. The projects were approved by the planning board, and MeLink, while time is construction to work, as time is construction near the Southbridge Middle High School to fit the school hours, I just, I wanted to make sure that this amendment called for extending the deadline for satisfaction of conditions precedent because of the, that the maximum deadline was going to be December 31 of 2018. Because the way it was written, it's kind of extends in two, two-six-month periods, which just seemed a lot, but I understand why it's being done that way. So I was wondering, is there anything else you can say about this? Have you heard anything more from them?
One of the problems with these projects is they get held up by the state programs and the state process, and this is simply held up by the state process. It's going to be a new program called the SMART program, and my understanding is going to be some kind of auction for these incentives, and they haven't even announced exactly the format of this auction yet. But, you know, MeLink would start tomorrow if they could, but they're sort of tied into this. They need, because the original contract gave them a certain deadline, they have to extend that to give them more time. It's not their fault that the state's dragging their feet, but it's an exciting project, and eventually, once we go through that auction, we'll get a better handle as to exactly what the revenue to the town will be. Because that revenue, as you know, when we discussed this original agreement, was one amount. It went under SREC 2, but there was options if SREC 2 didn't occur. So once that auction occurs, I'll be bringing back the town council to reexplain that revenue process.
Also, I was concerned, I noticed reading in the Beacon, the most recent Beacon, they talked a little bit about concerns with the state dealing with, I know specifically they were referring to Eversource. I don't know if it also applies to National Grid, trying to seek to change their electricity rates that would, in ways that would basically eliminate the profit margin for communities to do solar projects. I hope that doesn't hit this, because we've got so many solar projects floating around out there that we're ideally tied to, that it would be useless to do it if that happens. So I think we need to start talking to legislature, make sure that doesn't happen as well.
Okay. And there's no question we're gonna ask.
Yeah, there wasn't any other question.
Anything else? All those in favor? Unanimous, eight. Agenda item number 20. Vote to accept the FY 16 Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG, award in the amount of $4,460, signed July 12, 2017, Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency.
So moved. Second.
Questions? Discussion? Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I'm not familiar with this grant. Can you please explain it?
This is an annual grant, but he knows more about the nation.
Yeah, I don't know much about it.
Good evening. The Emergency Management Performance Grant has been an annual grant since roughly 2010, 2011. We get a small sum of money, which the town has to match either in cash or with in-kind services. Over the last few years, we've been able to purchase road barriers, metering equipment for the fire department, additional monitors for our dispatch center and the fire station. So it's not a huge sum of money, but it helps, you know, with us, some of the equipment costs and things like that. So one of the unusual things about this grant was its emergency management preparedness. One of the things that we've been trying for the last few years is to try to, you know, increase our sheltering abilities, but a lot of shelter needs weren't available on the grant. You know, go figure, federal and state, they haven't figured that out yet. So this was the first year that we were able to put cots in for the grant. So that's what we've asked for this year, is 25 cots, and then we've also asked for additional monitors for the Emergency Operations Center, so that during storms, we can watch the Weather Channel, or we can be plugged into the Web EOC through the Emergency Management Agency bunker in Framingham. So those are the two items that we've decided to try and go for this year. The grant was signed in July and approved by the state July 12, so I apologize for the short timeframe. This is not my normal routine, but it's the state, this year they rushed this one, so they're trying to get everything done and expended by October. So the deadline for us was September 30 for me to spend all of the money and get the equipment. The monitors, I feel I have no issue getting, but it'll be the stretchers and the cots, The monitors, I feel I have no issue getting, but it'll be the stretchers and the COTS, given everything that's going on down south. I'm not sure I'll be able to acquire those, so I have asked for an extension and I'm still waiting to hear back on and answer as to whether it would be granted an extension or not.
As the chief mentioned, that's why the timeframe, it just came to my attention on Wednesday or Thursday and asked that it could be put on the agenda for tonight, or it would have gone to PPP with an explanation first. But occasionally, time-sensitive items come straight up, so. Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor? Unanimous eight. Thank you, Chief. Now, you'll notice the next two agenda items, there's a couple of red spots. We had them remark these so that when we read them, they're appropriate, we don't have to amend anything. I received two emails today requesting change in language. These both came from Planning and Development, and while it was fine to work with Kim and make sure this got properly done, I would like to make comment that it is very important that whatever department and any subcommittee, when motions are made in subcommittee regarding something that is coming up to council, it is important that those involved, the management, whoever, whether it's the department head or the manager, make sure that those motions are very clearly taken so that in case the minutes aren't done in a timely manner or for whatever reason, I just ask that you be mindful of that. And if I ask the town manager to please direct the department heads to make sure that they know the protocol, to making sure that those motions get done correctly and get passed on to those who are helping make this agenda. There are times I'm not at a meeting, Counselor Steve's not at a meeting, to help with this, and it's not fair to the administration staff who are doing those agendas for us if they don't know the exact wording that was voted on in a subcommittee, and that's what needs to come up. The department heads should be prepared to bring that language to a subcommittee to help the chairperson as to what needs to be done so that when we get to this point, it is correct and we don't have to amend it. So I'm just making that statement for process procedure and smooth operations. Seeing that now, number 21 is vote to accept the FY2017 Mini Entitlement Program Grant awarded to the town of Southbridge in an amount of $775,000 for Massachusetts Community Development Grant. That's the CDBG grant program that you hear so much about.
Second.
Okay. Counsel, oh boy, the hands are going up on this one. Counselor Steves.
I just was hoping, because I noticed that Rose is, I see Rose, is that Heather? Rose.
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
I was just hoping that we could, I mean, I know what it is, but for the public's sake, I was hoping we could kind of summarize what this grant will be getting us because of the fact that the last time we talked about it was quite a while ago in public. So, just so people know.
Hi, I'm Rose Meyer and I'm in the Community Development Office. And the grant for FY17 will include the reconstruction of the Central Street parking lot and payment of a code enforcement officer.
Right.
Code enforcement officer.
Counselor Manna?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I know this was discussed somewhat in subcommittee. However, I remember in past years, when discussing CDGB money, that council's input had a say on like where we wanted to see the money go, and I didn't see that this year. I mean, I'm not saying that this is a bad thing, but I just didn't see that this year. Is there a reason why that didn't happen or? If anybody can answer that?
We-
Or if I just like am not remembering correctly?
Do you want to answer that?
We do have to hold a public hearing every year and we send invitations to, we post it, and we also send notices to the council. It's usually around, I believe, December, when we start talking about the components of the following year's grant.
Right. So it's not really directed towards that, it's just the council. I remember in years past that we would have, okay, we're applying for this, where do we want to see this money go? What we, do we want to see, do we want to see it go to like nonprofits? Do we want to see it go towards like a certain street or whatever? We don't have that discussion and I didn't really see that this year on this, so I was just curious to that. It's nothing against your office, I understand what you have to do, but I'm just talking as a council. We didn't have that discussion this year. I remember, last year.
I remember coming to subcommittee as a package, but as you say, the actual input of this is where we might want to see this money go was not a discussion. I agree with you. Counselor Steves?
I was curious-
I think Counsel DePietro too. We'll go with Counsel Steves.
Okay. I was curious, and you know, in the past, and this kind of ties back to some of the ideas I've seen, where we often have public hearings that are kind of in weird locations and at weird times. And I know I've seen other towns and towns that I've covered for the newspaper where they'll have these kinds of like CDBG hearings and so forth with their select one of their council or whomever their governing body is, and actually put it onto the agenda. I think it'd be a lot better that way. I know from the handful of CDBG hearings I've been to, they, in the past, sometimes they've actually had to literally drag people down the hall to participate because they didn't have enough people. At least here, we've got a few people in the audience, so they might be able to ask questions if we did it as a council hearing. I mean, Rose or Rosemary would still be like hearing officers, so to speak, but if we had it up here on a Monday night, it might be, there'd be more people who'd be aware of it.
And to that point, Counsel Steves, one of the managers' goals and objectives that we'll go over later includes the addition of public hearings within the council agenda, which makes it more transparent for everybody. So we'll talk about that future. Counsel DePietro, who had his hand up a while back.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Counsel Manna was kind enough to address my concerns. Thank you.
Counsel McKenzie.
Yes, I do believe that this was discussed at a subcommittee meeting and therefore the subcommittees are open to all counselors to attend. So all counselors would be privy to the understanding of the direction that this is heading for, and I don't think that there should be really any serious concern. However, I also do feel that counselors must have, not may have, but must have some kind of an understanding of the options and also some kind of say in the direction of the funding.
And to your point, Counsel McKenzie, you're right, it was presented but not necessarily discussed or debated per se. It was sort of a done deal when we got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Claire.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I guess I'm just wondering what the expectation is or how it was done in the past, because I know that, you know, during the CDBG grant time last year and then the year before, you know, I believe that, you know, or maybe this was the HUD, I'm getting it mixed up, but, you know, notices were put out. The hearing was, or the public hearing was done for the Central Street projects, and then it, from there, it went to the Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting. We vetted it there and then it came up to council, and then we vetted it here too. So what else would the council like to see with this so that we can, you know, begin working on? We're talking about last year's now, right? Or?
FY17.
FY17. So for FY18, what's the, what should the expectation be going forward so that everybody's on the same page and happy?
I think they're looking, we're looking at a timeliness factor. Previously, it would be entertaining what funds we're going to be used for before the, this is what we're using the funds for. So, for instance, we were asked, do we want to, not that we are doing that at this point, but did we want to use any money to allocate to social service programs? And at that point, then, we were actually vetting quite a few social service programs to allocate, say, $50,000 to those types of programs locally. So we had, we had a little more weigh-in and buy-in as to where and how that money was being spent.
So I'm just trying to clarify.
Here's what we're thinking of using the money for this year. How do you feel about that? Before it just gets to, we've already, we've made that grant and here's what we're doing? I mean, you know.
Okay. I mean, at this point, we've had several hearings, it's been in our packets, our weekly updates every single week since that money was first talked about being allotted. I mean, is there like a brainstorming session or something that you'd like to see from the council and subcommittee? I'm not, I'm just not clear and I'd like to, you know, appease the rest of the council if this is something that you'd want to do for fiscal year 18 and hold some kind of, I'm not entirely sure what else we should be doing. So any guidance on that would be, you know, appreciated to those who are unhappy with the process.
Might I recommend a subcommittee, an agenda item that just discuss maybe the timeline of this type of, these types of grants so that the subcommittee understands the timeline and what you're under for deadlines and such, and therefore maybe have that discussion as to at a subcommittee meeting level?
So for the deadlines, not necessarily what the projects are?
Right, yeah, just how the process goes forward so that everybody knows where they're at and how the Economic Development Office works on this so that that way, you know, the timeline.
Yeah, I mean, we're given-
So then you can develop what you asked for, which is-
Yeah, we're given, we're given updates on all of the ongoing CDBG grant projects and the HUD projects weekly, so.
Give me a minute.
I'm just not sure what else we should be doing.
I think it's a discussion at subcommittee level.
Okay.
To decide what it is that people need or want more for information. Counsel McKenzie.
Thank you. Hi, through you, Madam Chair. I do believe, however, that there are some areas that are inappropriate for this CDBG grant. So it kind of narrows the area where that money can be used. Is that correct?
Yes.
So she may have, or the subcommittee and the powers-to-be may have zeroed in on a limited area, and so therefore, for expediency's sake, just felt that this was probably the best bang for the buck. But even so, I think that perhaps we might want to have more of an input, such as your suggestion. I liked your suggestion about, can you give us some areas of possibilities and then what we can do is, you know, we can decide amongst the council as to what we'd like to do in direction. Thank you. But I do respect all your efforts and the way you've gone about this and it's fine.
Counsel Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I wasn't trying to draw blame on anybody, I just wanted to know where the discussion of that was. It was like, beginning of my counselor, maybe my second year of my first term, I remember getting a spreadsheet and looking at the spreadsheet. Okay, this is what, you know, where the money went last year. We have to finish this project, so we have to allocate this money for this project to finish it, but we have this money left over. And we did, I mean, we, okay, let's get some nonprofits in here, some social service programs. And then we have people that they apply for that money and it's like they compete for it. They're looking, they're looking to get that grant money. The council did have say on where that money was allocated. I remember having very, very long discussions, Council Landebin, Council Moriarty, Council Marcucci, with everybody. And, you know, it was kind of like a brainstorming session, but I remember Sandy Ackley actually giving us that spreadsheet, you know, talking to us about it and showing us. We had it right there in front of us, you know? And somebody said, well, maybe we can split this $50,000 up and give it to this social service program and another $25,000 can go to it. You know, it's just ideas like that or, you know. So, I mean, there wasn't, I wasn't trying to direct blame anywhere, I just wanted to know where the conversation went and why. You know, it just seems like, I'm sorry, lately, it just seems like the town council's out of the loop on a lot of things. We may get our packets, but there's no discussion anymore like there used to be in subcommittees. And, you know, quite frankly, it's disturbing. So, that's it. Thank you.
Counsel Claire.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Before we get too far down the rabbit hole, I'll schedule a meeting for this year's, for fiscal year 2018. I don't know where you, the Economic Development Office is in in the process, but maybe we can, you know, have an update and all of these things. But going back to the actual, the actual agenda item, sorry. What are these words? I do apologize, I have the full minutes in front of me. The ones that were sent out were cut off weirdly mid-sentence, so I'll send everybody the full meeting minutes at the end of the meeting. We did have some questions that evening regarding the grant, the $775,000 specifically. You know, it was originally $825,000. Because of an audit in 2014, it was then lessened down to the $775,000. We allocated $50,000 of free cash to make up the shortfall when we did our free cash hearings. And we asked for the actual reasons why the audit, you know, came back as a negative determination, and I never saw an email come out to that effect. So I don't know if we can get some answers for that tonight and also the other, the other issue was that there was a $20,000 balance left over after all the expenses on the balance sheets that we were provided with at that meeting. And we were supposed to get, we were supposed to get an answer for that $20,000 balance and whether or not it was accurate. So I don't know who I'd be referring that to, but those two questions, if anybody has an answer, I'd like one.
I can't really. Actually, I did talk to, I did talk to Rosemary about that and honestly, and she said that she would, that she thinks that it had just simply been an issue of having a previous document that hadn't been finalized. But I honestly don't know and neither does she. I don't know if Rosemary or, I don't know if Rose or Ron can clarify that anymore, but I honestly don't know, so.
The original document, the simple way to say it in the discussion with Rosemary, the original document was a mistake and she provided the town council with the actual numbers that were correct and every dollar was justified. She couldn't quite remember why the document was what it was months earlier, but she went through it all, she thoroughly looked at it, and she provided the council with all the exact numbers and balance.
Which is right here.
Thank you. As far as the audit is concerned?
Well, the audit, I've seen it, you know, it's an interesting question because I did see a response to that. And I think, Rose, did the response come from you to the auditors about that? Because I remember seeing some response from the department back to the auditors on some of the comments that the auditors had made. It was either you or Rosemary must have made that response.
Yeah, Rosemary made the response, and I'm not sure what she based it on because it all happened so fast, but I can get the information for you. I thought she had sent it to all of you.
Did I just miss it?
Because she was preparing it in an email.
We will send it, ask Rosemary to send it again to all the town counselors tomorrow so they have that information. I don't know if she sent it or not, so please have her forward it to the council so they can see the responses to the audit.
Yeah. Can I respond to something?
Sure.
That through you, to Counsel Manna? The, I know it seems that we haven't been communicating, but like I said, we do hold a public hearing every year, which clearly states that it's to go over the components of the grant that we're going to be applying for. But one of the reasons that this year, the central parking lot, that's taking up the lion's share of the money, and the reason we're doing that is we did the design work two years ago, so now we're moving forward with the construction portion of the project. And next year, some of the money from the FY18 grant is going to have to go toward the landscaping of that project. We're going to minimize the landscaping as much as we can so that we don't spend as much money as the architects put in, but we can't do the whole thing, the construction and the landscaping in one year. So next year, we will be asking to use part of the money for the FY18 grant for landscaping.
Counsel Steves.
One quick question is, to jump back to the other issue, the code enforcement guy. How long will that person last? And if we, if this, if we end up not having CDBG funding for this particular individual, are you expecting us to keep this person on as a town budgeted person?
No, it's a part-time job. We assume, we're hoping about 18 hours a week, and it's to go around town and look at all the code violations that a lot of the multifamily-owned properties have. And we all know there are quite a few.
I know there's a lot of them, yeah. No question about that.
Counsel Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you, to go off of Counsel Steves. The code enforcement officer is only under the CDGB money, correct? And once that money runs out, if we don't have any more money funded for that the following year, through that CDGB money, he will no longer be our code enforcement officer. Is that what he said? Because I could not hear a word you said, you sound like you're mumbling.
That is what I meant, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on this item? We've tackled it well. All right, all those in favor? Oh, let's do a roll call vote on this, please.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie?
He's on.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Seven yes and one not accounted for. Item number 22, vote to refer request for a zoning change of a parcel at 495 Main Street from two-family to general business back to Planning Board to schedule a public hearing as required by Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Second.
Okay. So we received a letter from the chairman of the Planning Board, and it reads, Dear Ms. Clements and Mr. Sanangelo, the Planning Board has received a request for a zoning change for the property at 495 Main Street, also known as The Beaches, for reasons described in the attached letter from Attorney Michael Cognasi and Paul Murphy of Caldwell Bank or Residential Brokerage. Attorney Cognasi and Mr. Murphy have been working with the owner of this property, Dr. TK Thomas, and prior to this formal request, they attended Planning Board meetings to discuss the issue at length. I've attached a map to show the property, which is located at the corner of Marcy and Main Streets, just before Main Street branches off to South Street. The property is often referred to as The Beaches. Going west, the houses following 495 Main Street have South Street addresses and are all within a large two-family residential zone. The properties east of 495 Main Street have Main Street addresses and are included in a large general business zone. Changing the zoning of this property would not be considered spot zoning because it would simply expand the general business zone by one lot. The two-family residential zone is a large, is large, and the corresponding decrease would not cause it to be a spot zone. The property is included in the recommendation for an expanded central core overlay zone now under construction. The overlay zone provides flexibility for dimensional requirements, but it does not regulate property uses. Therefore, council's vote on the overlay zone will have no effect on the issues outlined in the letters. According to Chapter 40A, Section 5, Mass General Law, the Planning Board must hold a hearing to receive a public comment at the direction of the town council. The Planning Board will be happy to hold the public hearing and looks forward to receiving your direction, very truly yours, David Payer, Chairman of the Southbridge Planning Board. And that's why we have this before us this evening. Okay. Any questions or comments or thoughts? Counsel McKenzie.
Yes, I actually live on South Street and as you, it's right on, what they're talking about is right on the corner of Main Street and Marcy, and there is a turn. And when you look from South Street, you would not see that corner. And to me, it would, to me, it would be basically a no-brainer to make that a, to rezone it as a business. It would not affect the- It would not affect the street of South Street at all. And yet, you've got a school building right across the street. You've got Rite Aid right there. And it would actually help with the facilitation of the sale of the property rather than to watch it just fall apart, deteriorate, and become another eyesore in the middle of our town. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Council O'Clair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, you covered most of what was spoken about in the subcommittee, specifically the spot zoning and ensuring that we weren't spot zoning. The general business runs right across there. And as you said, it would be connecting the two. The one thing that we did speak a little bit about, as we all know, there's an RFP out right now to rezone the town. And that was also discussed. And it's still about a year out from completion, so the timeliness of this needed to come before council. It's also in the central core district, so it's technically in an overlay. It's in an overlay. And since the home has been vacant for over two years, the town still retains control as far as what that building will ultimately be used for. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor? Unanimous vote. All right. So we are now at councilor's forum. Start with Council DePietro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A quick thank you to the Department of Public Works, Heather and Ron Trudeau especially. We certainly don't provide them with the funds to make a superhighway through the town of Southbridge by any stretch of imagination, any of these roads. But with the budget they have, you don't see the monster potholes. You see clean sidewalks. You see clean curbs. And for the limited staff and the limited funds they have, kudos to them. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Council McKenzie.
I just have one item, Madam Chair, and that is kudos to the town manager and the committee of the Drug Substance Abuse Committee and all that they look to be doing, both with Chris Heron and presentation at the school, and also, not a subcommittee, but a committee, a town committee. Our biggest problem, one of our biggest problems, I won't say our biggest problem, but one of our biggest problems is the drugs that are going on in this town. It's taking lives. And we need to rally around the red ribbon program. We need to rally around the efforts that are being done by the police department and town manager and our council to prevent drug abuse. And we're losing way too many people, young and old. And I just, I will be relentless in doing everything I can to curb the drug problem here in Southbridge. I ask parents to look at their children, to question them, to be on top of them, to know where they're going, to know who they're with, to know what they're doing, and to be supportive of all the efforts that are being performed in the town against drug abuse. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McKenzie. Council Manna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I want to thank you for offering a moment of silence today for the 9/11 remembrance. That's a day we must never forget and we must talk about and remind our children of the events that happened that day and their children. So those first responders that run into the face of danger while we run away. So I would like to especially thank them for their service on that day 16 years ago and every day. Thank you.
Council Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Very quickly, I'd echo the same sentiments as Council Manna and yourself, and very directly thank Fire Chief DeFranzo. And I know the town manager was out in front of the fire station this morning, along with Ms. Harnoyes and members of the fire department staff with their remembrance. I wasn't able to stay, but I did drive by at the beginning and I did check it out, I think, on YouTube or Facebook later in the day. Thank you for that. I'll take it a step further and mention my thanks to the members of our armed forces very near and dear to me. I know what our country's been through since that day. I'll never forget. My family will never forget, and I'm sure that members of our council feel the same. Thank you. Couple of quick things, and believe it or not, I'm going to be quick tonight. I don't know that we thanked Deputy Police Chief Jose Dinghy, who's very involved as the chair of the Substance Abuse Council, but his participation and guidance on that committee under the direction of Town Manager Sanangelo has been critical. So I thank him and Mr. Oris, who at Spectrum Health Systems sponsored Mr. Chris Heron coming today. So thanks again for that, and I'm sorry it came up again. I'd like to remind citizens that if you haven't been on the town of Southbridge website, the board and commission vacancies, as well as town council's subcommittee vacancies, are posted there. There are still opportunities to volunteer to serve the town. Please take a look. Also a reminder, and I don't know that Council Steves might have had this on his agenda to bring up, but on the 21st, the Board of Health has a public hearing on new solid waste regulations, trash and recycling. You can find that on the website. I'm sure it's the 21st. And then also, if you aren't aware and you don't have your library card, please get a library card. This is library card signup month. And if you haven't been on our town, on the Jacob Edwards Library website, there are just numerous resources there, including with your library card membership, you can download audiobooks and eBooks. You can find local information, and it's just a wealth of resources. I've spent a little time down there of late. And while I'm there, on an unofficial capacity, I'd like to thank Margaret Morrissey and her staff for all the help that they've given me. So I want to send some kudos over their way tonight. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Council Morales?
Thank you.
Council O'Clair?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I could not attend the Chris Heron event today, but I was able to attend the meeting last week about it. And I just want to say how impressed and proud I am at both Lieutenant Jose Dinghy and also the whole council that's working together with the substance abuse program. I think that it's a really impactful thing, specifically for the students. And I'm really glad that that was able to come to fruition, and we were able to do that in the high school. You know, Red Ribbon Week, I think, is more about having a conversation. You know, myself, as the parent of a daughter entering her tweens, you know, we like to think that our children are, you know, angelic little creatures that can never do wrong. However, these are conversations, they're tough conversations that need to be had. And I think that Red Ribbon Week is a great way to bring some focus to that and to raise awareness for that. It's never too early to have these conversations and to keep our own children safe. And, you know, it starts at home and hopefully, you know, continues and resonates throughout the whole community. So thank you to everybody who's involved with that. It's a great program that the town has worked towards in the past two years now. And the other, I did have a question. I was wondering, what is the status of 1 through 11 Central Street? Currently, it's exposed to the elements, covered in graffiti, and just all around beginning to deteriorate.
Just to be quick, on the building we're talking about, we're talking about the one that was damaged in the fire but not ripped down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair.
So it's my understanding it's up for sale again. I don't want to disclose the parties publicly because I don't know that they want that. But I'm told that the person who bought it from the original owner is selling it again. As you know, the person who bought it would have difficulty trying to do repairs to the building because there's back taxes owed and he can't do repairs. He can't get a permit to even do so. The new owner would be in position to do something. I don't know if the new owner has the funding availability to do something or not. That's really a private matter between them. But it's my understanding that it is being sold again, and I don't know exactly where it is in that transaction.
Okay, that's the building that was damaged right by it. And then on the corner, the building that goes down?
You're talking about Hunter's Building?
Hunter's, Hunter Foot's building. Now it's getting to the point where the back of the building is becoming an eyesore. And people are talking about it now.
So, through you, Madam Chair, and our health agent is very involved in that building. As a matter of fact, they actually went to court to look at trying to do receivership on that building. I don't think that went forward. They weren't going to do that. There is an understanding, the first impact and the major impact is the roof of that building. It has to be sealed. The first order, and I don't know the timeline off the top of my head, but he needs to seal that roof so it doesn't cause any further damage to the interior of the building. And specifically, my major concern is the restaurant that's in there, that there's no more damage and water into that. I think the better question could be addressed tomorrow of our health agent, exactly what the status of that is at this current time. But the last discussions we had was really mainly about securing that building in such a way as it wouldn't damage, and there's only, I think, the one tenant left. I think the other thread connector, whatever, is gone. So I think it's really the restaurant now. I've talked to the restaurant owner. Obviously, he's very concerned as well, so he would like the issue addressed. They haven't brought it to me last couple of weeks. I suspect something has happened to improve the situation, but I'm just not sure. So I can find that out for you tomorrow.
Okay. Also, is there, I know that when that building was first purchased, it was under the impression that there would be, you know, some different grants, some HUD grants to, yeah, to better that building and renovate it. They were supposed to be matching grants. They obviously all fell through because the business owner was unable to fulfill his part of the bargain. However, he was reimbursed almost the entire full price of that building, along with some engineering plans already from the state. And I was wondering if there's any way to pursue those funds and get them reallocated to a business owner that's actually going to do something on Main Street and in our central core without a giant rotting building?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm going to address a piece of that, but maybe Rose can help me on this one because I don't know the details, and maybe we need Rosemary to answer them. So you're absolutely correct. There was an original plan, when I came to Southbridge, that was in place for the owner of that building to completely revitalize that building and put in apartment units and to fix it all up. That was moving forward, and there were a lot of issues through that process. But when the final plan came through and that was actually put out to bid, the bid numbers came in way higher than what the expected cost of that project was. Therefore, the owner or HUD or CDBG through their process, there wasn't enough money to do the project, and you're correct, the project completely fell through at that point. You're also right, there was funding allocated during that time for planning and certain types of things. That, Rose, I think, is where I need your help, the actual money that was allocated to the owner of the building to do the plans and that kind of thing, and I know the purchase of the building. What happens with that status through CDBG now that it's fallen through?
We had put in, the owner had put in $85,000 to purchase the building, and the EDF grant put in $85,000 to purchase the building. The town, we were concerned when this fell through that the town would be responsible for paying anything that we spent back, because we spent money on engineering, the acquisition of the building. But we spoke to our rep in Boston, and we do not have to pay any of the money that we paid. It's the town's choice to go after the owner. And that's why we were looking for receivership, to take the building over in receivership. So we're looking into that right now. We actually had a meeting with the Attorney General's office. To my knowledge, Rosemary hasn't heard, gotten an answer back yet on that.
Thank you for keeping up on it and staying on it. I appreciate that. And I hope that we can find a remedy soon for that. Thank you.
Alsop?
I am Alsop. Thank you.
Okay. Council Steves?
Okay. I had a bunch of short things, actually. One thing was brought up by a couple of people. If I can maybe think of it, is first of all, I think it was the last council meeting, we approved $480,000 and Chapter 90 funding, if I remember correctly. Was that in addition to, I said that at the last council meeting, we had approved $480,000 and Chapter 90 funding. And I was curious, was that actually from the additional $200 million that the state approved, or was that actual Chapter 90 funding? Do we know how much we're actually getting this year? I'm assuming it's something, I hope it's something more than that.
Through you, again, I think it's a question better put to our DPW director. I know that that was the Chapter 90 funding that came through, the allocation. I don't know if there's any additional money as a result of what was put aside for that coming or not. But Heather could better answer that question. So again, tomorrow, I'd be happy to check with Heather about that, find out what the amount is, and forward that to the town council.
That would be nice. Also, in related, I was wondering, what's the status of the Route 131 bridge project? It just seems to be sitting there in limbo forever.
Okay. So through you, Madam Chair, and I've had a little bit of discussion with Heather about that. And there's a lot of frustration that they're not completed with that. And it's going on. As a matter of fact, we've had complaints from a couple of residents, and we have to keep referring them to the state because we don't have the answers to that. I hate to say it this way, but it's true. The state works at its own pace, depending upon what other projects it has in their scope at that time. So the project, clearly, to residents, it is a state project. It is something that's not in our control. I appreciate the council's concern about it, but I don't have the authority or the ability to make the state move faster than it chooses to. But Heather has routinely been in contact with them, is working with them, and I think, like you, is frustrated that it's not happening faster.
So do we have any timeframe when they're actually going to do any work? They look like they were going to start it months and months and months ago and then just disappeared.
Yeah. My understanding is that they went back on the job and they went off again. So I don't know where they are at this point because it's been, I think they're kind of doing work as they fit into their plans. But the answer is, we don't know what the state's doing. And other than Heather reaching out to them on a regular basis, like I said, they do what they want to do.
Council Steves, I did understand it to be a two-year project supposedly, when they initially started.
Did that include all of this dead zone?
There was a start, stop, and two years.
Doesn't surprise me, unfortunately. Also, a bunch of things I just wanted to mention. First, earlier, I had forgotten, when I was doing GenGovern, that I had tentatively set a GenGov meeting for Monday, the 18th at 7:00. I don't think it's been formally posted yet, because there's a bunch of things that we wanted to talk about, including, I'm going to have, I'm trying to have Kim come forward to talk a little about human resource issues, the thing that you requested, Councilor Manna. We're going to kind of go a quick summary of some of the job descriptions. There's a whole ton of them that have been revised with a grant project or something we had gotten a while back, and so we're going to finally get to see those, with possible Schedule I and V changes for some of them. I'm going to bring that landfill bylaw thing back up. And I think there's one or two other things that I can't remember at the moment that I want to throw on it, but haven't gotten there yet. Also, let's see, the Historical Society is kicking off their fall semester this Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. with their first of their three presentations for the fall. So if you're interested in history, you should check that out. I'm drawing a blank on what it's about this time, but if you're interested, go there. Also, I wanted to mention that United Way is doing their Day of Caring on Friday, all over the place. So you might see a bunch of crews showing up and doing yard work and building houses and, well, probably not building houses, but doing house repairs and things like that. For those of you who are more interested in environmental stuff, the Big Mo is on Sunday in Sturridge. And the library is doing their Latino Heritage Month, so there's a lot of events going on over there, including flamenco dancers, a Brazilian musician, and a long list of other things. So check their website to see specifics and dates and times and stuff like that. And that's all I had. Oh, and that's all I have for that.
So the next meeting dates?
Well, we have one immediately after this. When we adjourn, we're going to be continuing the discussion of the town manager's goals and objectives, going downstairs. And the next regular meeting is Monday, September 25, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in this chamber.
Anything else from anyone? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous eight. So as Council Steves said, downstairs, Veterans Room, if you are interested in Council of the Whole.